They got you. No. Basically, get you to get that. Um, so we are beginning the meeting of today's board meeting. Um, do we have public comment? Three times. I'm looking in the right direction this time. Marie, the Treasury report, please.
The Finance Committee made the recommendation and I said move that the board approve the funding bills in the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second motion.
Do we have any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other business? Marie. It's set agenda. We have approval of the minutes of the meeting held March twelfth. Administration Committee reports from February twenty-one, March twenty-fifth and April fourth. We have the Building Committee, the updated Building Committee. We have the Art Outreach Committee report. We have a combined Upper Hudson and Presidency Report. So I make the motion that we accept the six items. Actually, eight, under the consented agenda.
Eight?
Well, there's two.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
May I ask a question, please?
Well, can we get a second first?
A second.
Second motion.
Okay. Question?
Uh, Building Committee report. Paul Jackson was not at last month's meeting. Were there two Building Committee reports that were entered into the minutes of consent agenda for our meeting of last month?
Just one.
So in the past, since the beginning of the year, there have been four Building Committee meetings and there have been minutes for all of those. Those minutes have been distributed and shared out. I would ask that the minutes of all four Building Committee meetings be included in an agenda, either today or the previous meeting.
Be included in what was?
I want to make sure they get into the records. I want to make sure they get into the record.
Okay, I'll make sure that we've got them. We can check back the packet to see what was included and therefore what wasn't. And then make sure whatever was not is included in next month's packet and then becomes approved.
We can do it now and add it to this monster.
I want to make sure that we are including the same thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, so I had your promise that will sometimes your promise that you get all the minutes that are any minutes that are not currently entered.
Excellent, we'll do. And it'll be in this month's minutes that we're involved, so we remember to do it next month. I'm sure the secretary will remind me to do this too, if I could get it.
Yes, I just have a question. Uh, and it could be just that I just don't know what this acronym means. Um, NC, it says another opinion shared by MYLS indicated that as long as public library offered curbside pickup or similar measures reopening without access was acceptable. And why LS stands for?
Um. That was from last?
The, our minutes from last meeting.
Oh, okay, we're going back to the minutes. It could have been mid York.
Yeah, yeah, mid Hudson.
No, it wasn't mid Hudson. It was going to be mid York.
Mid York.
Okay. Okay. I just wasn't familiar with that. Uh, I thought I might have.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think, I think you might have changed that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what that's still for.
I told you cosmetics things that I know.
No.
Um, okay, so we do have any other, any discussion, any other discussion or questions or anything else on anything else? Nope, we have a motion, we have the second, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 Now, regular agenda. Carolyn. I'm sorry, I do, it's next. It's so much easier than we tried to scroll through this. Okay, the community survey, which is why I'm saying, Carolyn.
Um, so we, we did a soft launch of the community survey on, uh, April first, no joke. Um, and so far, we have over a hundred responses, which is, I'm pretty happy with. A hundred, yep. Um, yeah, yeah, it's been shared and that's for a soft. I mean, we haven't put it on, we haven't sent out a program announcement yet for our PR announcement. We haven't put on our social media. It is on the website. We've shared it with a couple of different neighborhood groups, the League of Women Voters. Um, where, you know, we, we have, I shared the worksheet with everybody, a lot of places that we're thinking. So if there's something that's not included on there that you think we, you have a connection where we could be sharing that information out with them, and we were more than willing to add that to our list of places that we're contacting.
Um, I Send it to the, the three seventy that we have email address.
Yeah, and we got a nice boost from that when, when that happened. You could see immediately that we got a lot more responses. Of course, at this point, because of how it's been distributed, I would say only a handful of the people who have filled it out have said that, no, they do not use the library. So those are the people that we're kind of really trying to make an effort to get a hold of. Um, we are, you know, through the League of Little Voters, the Y, the school districts, we've been in touch with both school districts, city council, we've spoken civic council meeting. Um, so we really, you know, trying to get it out there as, as much as we can. Um. I thought I had something.
I, I think it's, I forget the specific date, it was on July twenty-fifth?
Fifteen.
Fifteenth, um, I think that's very appropriate by the time.
Yes, well, and that was, um, Christine's not here, but she was the one who really brought that up, that we wanted to make sure that it, we had enough time for the summer reading program to kick in and that we would be using it at that point as well. Well, that's it. Unless there's anything else. Oh, and we, there are, there's bookmarks here. So I mean, if you want to take bookmarks with you when you leave and distribute them to our wife, to friends and family, please do.
I also have to take the survey.
Yes, and yes, as well as take the survey ourselves.
Done.
You have something?
No, he said done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It was an incredible job.
Yeah, I think it's, it's gonna, we're good, some of it, I have to tell you, there's a lot of people who have a very good sense of humor.
Excellent.
Oh.
It was one person who said, I am filling this out from the bathroom and you're adding toilet paper.
Thank you.
You're joking? Oh, my goodness. All right.
It was amusing to read.
Man, I was trying.
So, thank you. And now, Paul, you're on, deferred compensation.
I'm on?
Yeah, you want to talk about the resolutions you want?
There's a resolution.
Yes, I know.
Is it in the package somewhere?
It is in the packet.
Uh, we need a resolution in order to implement the, um, deferred compensation program. So that's why, if you know, um, if I can find it.
Just passed the survey.
Page thirty-two.
So, didn't we pass a motion saying that we would explore it? So.
What are you, sorry, what elaborate?
Pardon?
Um. We did pass a motion that I think Joy was going to, um, explore it by having, um, a representative from the state office come to talk to employees, but I'm not sure if that happened.
Yes.
It did happen?
Well, we had a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Meeting didn't actually come and start at our door, but still, we had a meeting.
And Paul, what was the response of the employees? Are they interested in having this available to them?
What's that?
So after learning more about the program, are employees interested in having this?
Some are, yes.
Okay.
Or any idea of percentage? Is it two percent or fifteen percent?
The idea, how many people are interested at the moment?
Um, I would have to say like a couple came and spoke to me personally about it. Um, and I have put notices about asking me questions, emailing me. Um, so I would say so far, just a couple have spoken to me about joining.
Likely to be of interest to full-time employees and only about half of our employees are full-time. Um. But it may be more interest as we go along.
Well, this is more interest than we knew about when we last discussed it. So at, at that time, we didn't know whether anybody was interested.
Right.
Well, I think we were still interested in doing it or going forward. Um, because of the possibility of other employees coming in that would be interested. It was going to be another benefit of sorts.
Every time we can find a benefit that's not costing us money, it's a good thing.
It does cost it if it takes up Joy's time. Um, but since we've established that there are people who are interested in it now. I don't see that as the, um.
So we would have to, uh, pass a resolution in order to proceed.
And so, may I make that motion?
Would you throw this to the table? I think it would be in your honor to do that, yes.
I would like to, if we were to try public library, we see with the adoption of the state of New York deferred compensation plan.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous and the motion passes.
Okay.
Great. Well, you're up again, Lansenberg.
Oh. We put that on there.
You put that on.
I put that on it.
Well, I guess you did put it on there, but yes, you did.
Well, we're open.
Yeah, we're one.
We, we opened, of course, uh, April first. And, um, we have a wall between the, uh, uh, two rooms, the one that's not in use and the one that is. Um. We are currently offering, uh, curbside service. And we're also offering access to the old Handicap Access area. Um. And other than that, um, you know, things are pretty smooth. Um. I have, um, um, signed an agreement with, um, the, uh, firm of claim solutions, um, to work on our insurance claim with Hanover. Um, matter of fact, we're going to be tomorrow up at Lansenberg, um, and they're working on a couple of angles and as to how we're going to proceed.
Um, after that meeting, could you just give us like a very high level idea of what their approach might be since Hanover denied our claim twice?
Certainly, to a meeting, you know.
Thank you.
We'll outline what we're doing or hope to do.
That would, that would be great.
Did you say a meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Laurie, do you mind if I ask you a quick question?
Laurie?
No, go ahead.
Uh, what are, how, how was, um, patronage of Lansenberg looking currently, even compared to when it was, might have been slow in November, December? I'm just kind of curious, the throughput we're getting.
Uh, the number of patrons that we got on the first, second and third days was phenomenal. Uh, we had a lot of people come in, uh, people were very happy to see us open. They were, they were bringing us gifts. They were very excited. Um, and since then, it's dropped a little. It's a little quieter now. Uh, still, we're getting people in every day though that are saying how glad they are that the library is open, that they didn't realize the library was open until they saw the light-up signs. Um, on and, uh, and of course, we've had a sign outside with balloons on it and we've had the curbside code now. So there's a lot of visual, we're trying to create a lot of visual interest from, um, in the front of the library. So it's real obvious we're open. Uh, and that seems to be doing the trick.
Excellent. Very, I'm very glad to hear that, Laurie.
I am too.
Go in the times you knew most.
Really?
So that everybody would see. Almost everybody. Anyway, I think people, I said in my report that people are happy with being offered.
There's a, there's a great picture of, uh, some of our employees on page.
Laurie, I'm, I'm curious, curbside service, what does that provide?
Um. I'm so sorry.
You want me to be more specific?
Sure, go ahead.
So, uh, does it include somebody? Um. Picking up, being able to get copies curbside? Get a printout?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. We can, um, any library service other than I mean, we could probably work around faxing if there was a way, if, you know, they had all the information. Um, but certainly with photocopies, any library materials that they want to pick up. Um, you know, anything that we have here in the library, we are happy to accommodate that. Thus far, we have not had anybody take up, uh, take us up on our curbside offer. Uh, but all staff are currently trained and ready to oblige.
And have you maintained confidentiality?
Have we maintained confidentiality in what sense?
How, how would you provide confidential copying services? I'm, I'm just curious.
We do not guarantee confidential copying services.
Okay, just, just checking, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, did I also hear that, uh, we're allowing the public to go through construction areas or unoccupied areas of the building?
We are using the, uh, the side ramp. We have locked the door and we keep the door locked during the day. The only way that patrons can go into that room is if they are accompanied by library staff.
And that's only for handicap people, is that correct?
Yes, yes, or anybody who has need of the ramp. So we're not testing people.
I'd like to, um, reiterate the comments I made in my letter of the twentieth of March and have requested that letter be entered into the minutes. It has not yet been done so. But I'm now going to hand this letter out to everybody here. And I expect that this here be added to the minutes of this meeting with my concerns on this topic. And, um, to clarify allegations or, I'm sorry, not allegations. Hmm. Comments that were made that reputed to be in my, uh, comments in the last meeting. Uh, I think some of those comments were taken in part and were not repeated incomplete. So I'd like that these comments that are summarized in my letter of the twentieth of March be noted as my comments on this topic and my concerns about having members of the public go through areas of the building that are not open to the public. That, um, I am also concerned about, uh, trying to provide services to the public that are less than services that, uh, trying to provide services to some members of the public that are less than services that provide to other members of the public.
Um, I will say, Kristen, a couple of things, because we talked.
Yeah, I don't think we've talked about this letter. So I'm very curious to hear what you're going to say.
I am going to repeat what I had already said to you about this. Well, one, by the way, I don't remember you asking that this be included in the minutes.
It was in the email. I think I have right here.
Letter, I just remember you in the letter, but I would say.
I'm sorry, it's right there in my email.
Okay.
Kristen, I would like to apologize because I feel responsible for the mess. I missed that part of the letter, including them, so. I apologize. I promise it wasn't intentional.
Um, I also.
Please accept the attached notes, my thoughts on this matter, and please add it to the agenda for our next meeting to be entered into the record. That was my email.
I apologize, I didn't see that part.
Twentieth of March, right there in the first page.
I read the letter. I, I guess I just missed that show. But I also said at our last meeting, um, at the Building Committee meeting, that one, your second paragraph, based on conversations with Director Cole Hickok, Board President double Cass Greenstein and Board Vice President Keith Slupski, that you unfortunately forgot to mention treasure the deposit. And I think if this is going to be entered into the minutes, then you need to add that to. So that's part one. And part two was a comment on that I made to you about this is while you did, I understand, listen to the recording. I don't know if the flavor was completely understood, that some of the things that you said we were going to do, and it turns out they may have been done, were broached as suggestions at the board level.
It's okay. I'm, I'm just saying that this, I didn't, Mike, this letter is not meant to comment on what was discussion of the previous board meeting. This letter is meant to be a summary of my thoughts on the matters regarding the, uh, the topics that were discussed.
I understand.
Not any comments about what was discussed during the previous board meeting. So, that Marie, I'm going to ask, do you feel you were present for that discussion after our meeting of the last meeting for the entire discussion? Were you there for a few moments at this, at starting that?
I don't remember being part of a discussion. I tried to convey things that were said during the meeting, um, at which you had not been present. But I did not stay for the discussion. I left.
So I'm going to stand by, I'm going to stand by the letter as it stands. Thank you very much.
And you may think to me, but the thing is, the two of you spoke. Later on, you stayed a little longer and then you mentioned the three you spoke to later. It was just a conversation and I think it would be fair to include all people who spoke to you after. And I also want to make it and put this into the record that, again, your perception that this is what we said we were going to do, it was, it were, there were suggestions of what we could do. There were brainstorming moments.
Brainstorming moments that included a straw ballot. A straw poll. So I think I pretty understood pretty clearly what the straw polls intent was. And, um.
Straw poll was trying to prioritize how we were going to use funds and what was.
Exactly, and I understand that that, those, well, I haven't heard yet. I'm looking forward to hearing a report from the director on what the outcome of that, um, grant application was. Um, I know there had been discussion of what that grant application might include. I understand perhaps it's gone a different direction, but I have not heard that yet. So I'm looking forward to a report to confirm what, uh, the grant application included and what the status of that grant application is.
Yeah, now is a good time to talk about it, or is any, that was going to be my question. Well.
I'm sorry.
Where's, so the grant for the Troy, so I'm sorry, Kristen.
Detroit Savings Bank Musical Foundation Grant.
Okay, that's been submitted.
And what was the grant submitted for?
For a ramp on the east side of the building.
Excellent. And has that, uh, grant been, have we heard anything determination yet from the foundation yet?
No, we don't expect to hear until.
A, yeah, okay, thank you.
I had asked the question as to whether we could go ahead at, with the grant, uh, without, and sorry, I had asked whether we could go ahead with the ramp. Um, while awaiting to hear from from the musical about.
I wouldn't recommend, no, I wouldn't recommend it. No, I'm sorry, um.
I thought.
Sorry, Marie, are you talking about our March, the March meeting?
She's talking about ordering the ramp.
Okay.
I don't remember.
Go ahead and ordering it without the grant.
Okay.
As somewhat assuming that we're hoping that we're going to get.
Yeah, I've been to the building committee.
Okay. Sorry.
I, I just don't remember which meeting it was, but because I've seen some grants that won't pay for things that have already been done. Um, I had asked the question as to whether this would, it would be nice, you know, if we could proceed to get the grant.
I don't disagree.
Get the ramp in place without jeopardizing the grant.
Well, first of all, we don't have the grant and we don't know if we're going to get the grant. We're talking about twenty thousand dollars, which we don't have.
Well, but we established that we did and, and the board approved the expenditure.
And, and to say we don't have it, I think is, there was a choice that was made that we didn't put that as our priority. We do have the money. Let's not beat around the bush on that.
And, and the board approved the expenditure, um, at one of our meetings.
We approved a, an expenditure of twenty thousand dollars, but that's for memorial things then, just the ramp. It's for the wall. It's for anything else that has to be done, had to be done to make it that the branch openable again. And just to clarify, as far as my understanding is, is that the Tri-Savings Bank grant is eighteen, might be for twenty K, but it's eighteen for the ramp and two for the, one second, and, and two for the partition.
The, the, the friends were going to pick up the, um, cost of the petition, which was, I've forgotten now at this point.
The petition cost, um, sixteen twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Um, can I?
Yes, you may.
Say, so I wrote the grant.
Uh, yeah, the grant will go through the Friends organization because it is an official four oh on three C.
So a little background that, you know, there was that I may be speaking out of turn. There was some concern whether the grant was a priority for the board. And so the, the question was, was whether the foundation was flexible. They had expected that the library was going to approach them for the ramp and for the wall. And, uh, then when, uh, whatever, the straw vote happened. Um, the question was whether this was a priority or not. And Paul and I then talked to the head of the foundation and they said, we are interested in the ramp and we are interested in the wall. And that if we could demonstrate, we could do, this is talking to your thing about starting work on something where you don't have the money, that if we could, um, show evidence that, that it, that building the wall would facilitate open.
Sorry, I called those first.
Yeah, would facilitate opening up the, the library, that that was the thing that was going to open the library. Um, we said, friends said, we will pay for the wall. If the money comes in from the foundation, this twenty thousand dollars, the ramp costs nineteen five sixty. Okay, that's the estimate from, from, um, that Paul has gotten, which leaves a big four hundred and forty dollars, um, to the ramp. So. You know, it's, it's just change. I mean, so we, we haven't written it yet, but we're going to write it, uh, a check to the construction company that built the wall. And, um, so that's, that's how, that's how it stands. But Paul, Paul worked on the, the, um, on the grant application, but I wrote it. Um, and, and so, um, you know, I had, had to get certain specs from Paul, but, um.
Well, this would go through.
And this was because, because the foundation wanted to fund a five oh one C.
Yeah, this will go through, um, the, under the name of the friends.
Yes.
Who will administer this.
Yes.
Um, so just to be clear.
Yeah.
Paul, um, I know.
So does that help as I said?
Yeah. I, I appreciate the reiteration of the whole grant process and thank you so much for writing it. I really appreciate it.
But anyway, but, but, you know, that, because you were concerned about, right, you were concerned about process and stuff like that. And so this is part of what happened, you know, so, yeah. And, you know.
And, you know.
There, there are several concerns, and that's why I'm trying to clarify that there are a lot of concerns.
My role in this whole mess. Sorry, I can clarify my role in this whole conversation then, you know. I'd like to. Can I add something out? Oh, we finished with Lansingburg, because I would like to add something else about Lansingburg, okay?
I don't think we are, but.
Okay.
I'll try calling you again, can you?
Okay.
Paul, sorry, can I, can I jump in for a very brief moment? Um, at the building committee, you, you did um, indicate to the committee and the board, um, that you had the quote and some drawings for the ramp. Um, can you just pass them along, please? I'd love to see them.
Sure.
Thank you.
And speaking of quotes, were you able to get quotes from the other two places yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you planning on pursuing them?
Is there a better price, perhaps? I was presenting a quote.
Um.
Be my recommendation.
Alex, yes, if you were planning on pursuing them.
I'm sorry?
Other, other quotes.
Not yet, no.
But you are planning on.
Yes, yes.
That, that was the question.
Um, okay. Are you planning on pursuing before we get the grant, or are you planning on pursuing quotes after we get the grant?
I'm planning on doing it in the process. I mean, as we go along.
I'm just trying to understand timeline, because there are a couple places where.
I'm not gonna wait till after the grant, no.
Okay, good. We're gonna get quotes before we get the grant award. Thank you.
But do you have those companies?
No. One is definitely in the director's report from last month, and the other one is in an email.
And to reiterate, the grant is not guaranteed.
Of course not.
But it sounded like it was pretty plausible.
But it depends on whether they think that I guess they should grant the Friends of the Library and not the library.
We have to decide whether we're a viable enough organization.
Uh.
Ah.
Sharing responsibility.
That's part of the mix.
Okay, thank you. Oh, um, any, any reason I think you're not?
There was no indication. But, but you know, they, they wanna make sure that they're rewarding twenty thousand dollars, that they would be good stewardship of that money.
Yeah. They blame them for that.
No, can't blame them. And I think that's true of every grant. Right. But they've never funded us before, you know, so we're, you're on the block.
But at least you've got the library who's been, you know, around for a hundred and twenty-six years as a good partner.
They don't know that. Later on, the library's gonna stay. Um. All right, so we talked about the insurance, we talked about the ramp, we talked about anything else that has to be done to be um, restored, uh, the SAM grant, we can't deal with on, because they haven't passed a budget yet. And then this construction funds are coming up. They're on the horizon. And of course, we don't know how much money the system's getting in because they haven't passed a budget yet.
We do know.
Okay, is there any other questions or discussions on this? And Freda, the, the comments you wanna make about Lansingburg, does this have anything to do with what we're talking about tonight? Well, you're talking about Lansingburg is open, and so I just wanted to make the comment that the bookseller is not open. And we're not going to open until June. Um. Part of it is the difficulty of, of healing with a number of book donations that the library gets. Uh, the lack of storage, those kinds of things, and then, um, so we have decided not to open till June, and we will have a, uh, a big outdoor sale, open the bookseller then.
Thank you.
Get some snowman, get a book.
Now, when you were meeting with both from the Troy Savings Bank Foundation, did you get any indication as to whether uh, we could go ahead and start building the, the ramp?
No.
Without jeopardizing the grant?
No, but uh, uh, doing the wall was seen as a positive, uh, as a good faith effort on the part of of the library and the, the friend, yeah, so.
So is there likelihood that you would be reimbursed for the need to do the wall, or, or does that mean that there's more from what they would give us to go toward the ring?
The priority, I think for them, I don't know this. I'm guessing is the ramp. Because that's the big ticket item, and, and so the, uh, my sense was I don't know that. I don't know that. I really don't know that. I don't know idea.
Well, even in that process, if they give us a full twenty K, and there's some question about the reimbursability, and we get a different quote, I I think we can manage that at, at some point, dealing with the Friends.
Yeah, right, so then so that the money left over from the ramp, which it would be designated to the wall, we then could use for other kinds of things related to Lansingburg.
And the process, reopening again.
It's all about reopening and getting Lansingburg fully functioning. That's the, the motivation behind. That's the interest that the foundation has.
Yeah, and that was certainly the interest of the board too. In all the discussions we've had. Okay. In that case, I think, are we done with Lansingburg? I think for the moment. Um.
I know I have one more thing. I know that the, the church across the street from me built a ramp.
I'm sorry?
The church across the street from me built a ramp.
Which church is that?
First United Presbyterian.
I love the church.
Do you want me to inquire as to who did that ramp? I would be any benefit.
And, you know, if you can, I, 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 I think the building, you know, there's one over here at the Episcopal Church, um, I think building something like that probably would run more expensive. That's just my.
Than what you're looking into, which is the?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I'll see if I can get quotes from anybody who supplies ramps, and, and, uh, yeah, we could get a quote from.
I'll, I'll see what I can find out. There may not be people around who even know who did it, but I'll, I'll, I'll ask them.
Well, any good, any good general contractor can probably do it. But you know, I think it's gonna be a bigger cost, but, I don't know, that's just my experience.
It seems like a big ramp.
Hmm, well, it, it, the thing is, in order to be compliant, it has to, in, in, in the room that we have, you've gotta have two sections. And that's gonna be two platforms and, and the whole nine yards. It's like the one over at the church here. Um, so it's a pretty good size construction.
And the quote comes from a medical supply, um, organization who, who would know the ADA compliant regulations, which is central to this description. It's not just a ramp.
Right, because we already have one of those.
We have one of those.
Yeah. It's not so compliant.
Exactly. There's no way to open the door.
Yeah, but anyway.
So. So we all, we are done with the discussion of Lansingburg? So we can move on now to annual reports.
Annual reports, okay. Well, I think, um, the annual report is in the Dropbox. Um. The annual report, uh, I think the most, one of the big, um, things about the annual report this year was the, um, um, programming. Um, attendance at adult programs, uh, for twenty twenty-three over five thousand six hundred and seventy-two, which is six times.
Yeah, it's phenomenal.
The, uh, the attendance in, uh, twenty twenty-two. Um, and you know, with that kind of attendance too, um, you know, get people involved in the library and it puts, um, the name around town and the fact that, uh, the library's doing things and let's go over there. So it does attract a lot of people and attracts, um, uh, attention to the library. Um.
Think you're understating it. I'm like, that's phenomenal. I hear, I hear nothing but good things about the programming we offer here, so.
And, you know, it's a great job on the part of our program director, Chloe Wood. And she's been doing, um, some great things with adult programming. Um, also attendance at children's programming, uh, has increased uh, by about twenty-five percent. And, um, you know, one of the things I see, you know, visually is, um, story hour. And the story hour has really been popular. Uh, which it, you know, we haven't had as much interest here at the main library in the past, um, so it's really great. We've got a lot of little ones and parents and great attendance. Um. Uh, so it's a, it's a great job on the part of Carol Roberts in YPS and her staff. Um. Overall material circulation has increased about thirty-two percent over twenty twenty-two, um, which is also going in the right direction. And, uh, now I think I can compare year to year. I haven't comparing everything with two thousand and nineteen, which was before the pandemic. Um, but I think we have, um, recovered rather well from, um, loss of circulation and so on. Um, lo, lo, uh, use of electronic materials, um, has also increased. Um, but that's a slower increase than it used to be. Um, forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-four in twenty twenty-two to fifty-six thousand one hundred and forty-nine in twenty twenty-three.
It's just a good, nine percent, that's good.
Yeah, it's substantial, um, but it used to be a faster growth, and it's sort of more leveled out. People are more used to using electronic, uh, materials and, uh, so it's, it's, uh, sort of an established service. Um, number of trans, reference transactions held, held about even. Um, interline very long, say years increased slightly. Um, the library is a net borrower at twenty-six thousand eight fifty-eight. Um, uh, as opposed to, uh, items loaned of twenty-four thousand three hundred and seven, but it's, um, pretty good activity on both fronts.
Well, so last year was a fluke.
Yes.
What is, well, that was sad. I was hoping. Oh, well.
It's must be, like, it must probably. And then I got him.
That we were, that's lender. Oh, well, same with the whole part of it.
Um, people of leverage, yeah, so. I don't know, I say we're back to normal service lots.
Um, just so I know too, when we were net borrower, does that also include things like local usage? Or is it just material that goes through circulation?
It would just be the material through circulation, yeah.
Right, thanks. I was sort of wondering about that. Any questions or comments or?
Look what I'm seeing.
Right, thank you, Paul. And now director's evaluation. Dan?
Yeah.
You wanna discuss? Yes, we can hear you. You want to?
I'm confused. Can we move on to director's report?
No, we were on the annual report. Some of these things are also in his report. Like, um.
Yeah.
We've kind of been doing that over the last few years.
May I get to go?
Yes, you're good to go.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so the admin committee has been working on the director's evaluation. I sent that to the entire board. I know we've had some questions since that Evelyn has answered, and we can update those changes, um, but I, I don't know, Evelyn, if we are gonna be discussing the evaluation more so in this, but, um, basically, we looked at last year's evaluation and in ways that we can improve it to, um, uh, look towards this year. Um, I think one of the things, again, since I wasn't here last year, um, was talking about the scale rating. It seemed that there was some, uh, like discrepancies, confusions over, uh, what the ratings meant last year, so we wanted to be a little bit more, um, clear cut with that, so, uh, ratings now at the top from one to five, uh, are a little bit more, uh, focused on the board expectations. Um, I've also, or we've also added a comment section to every question, and this is super important, especially if you answer uh, an NA or unknown, we wanna know why, um, and obviously for each section, there's still the overall comments. Um, but I think the biggest thing that, um, we want to walk away with this is seeing, uh, action from the evaluation. Um, so we're working on, on something with that as well.
Thank you, Zan.
So Dan, I don't in the, in the rating scale, I don't see an NA.
It's, oh, it's that it's included in each question of.
It's, it's below the one, two, three, four, five, immediately underneath that, there's a paragraph about NA, yep.
I can add, do you mean like at the top? I can add an NA to that, that's missing, um. In the, like, director evaluation twenty twenty-four. If there's no, there's no NA there, but I'm happy to add that in. But it is in every single question, or it should be.
It is.
Um. Yeah. Anyone else on the admin committee wanna add to this?
So the comments that have been made about the instrument.
Yeah.
How will they be addressed?
Um, I am currently traveling right now, uh, so I can add in any updates. Um, but we can, do you, we wanna discuss that now?
Yes. Yes, please.
Let's do that.
Because we did wanna bring this to the board for approval, so we can keep it moving forward.
Absolutely.
And Marie, when you said comments, are you talking about the questions and answers? Are you talking about your email? I, which comments?
Well, my biggest concern isn't, is my email, but I, I understand that there were other comments too, so I just didn't know how that was gonna be handled, whether, you know, whether we were expecting to act on this today, how they would be integrated or not integrated and. Um.
Zan, do you mind if I take, answer Marie right now?
Yeah, that's fine. I only heard half of that anyway. Cut out a little bit.
She was, uh, Marie was curious about the other comments that had been made. She heard about them. And, but she is more concerned about the email that she sent. Um, I, I'm pretty sure you received that one too, I sent it on to you.
About the documentation of institutional knowledge and succession planning.
Exactly, and I think you, you've been aware of some of the other conversations about it. So, uh.
Marie, I just want to let you know, as part of the admin committee, I really appreciated the inclusion of, uh, documentation of, uh, institutional knowledge. It was good insight, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's something that's been discussed over a number of years, but has never gotten into the the director's evaluation.
Yeah. I think it's.
Sorry, Zan, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 I, I was just gonna say, I do, I do think it's very, um, it's something I was surprised to learn that we hadn't implemented that already, so I think that's worth adding. And thank you, and I will make, I'm making notes as we speak.
And I agree, Marie, with the succession planning. I think that's an important part that needs to be, we need to have that in place.
This is clarification we need on that.
Yeah, I think there's for this evaluation. Do you wanna go on?
No, please, go ahead.
Um. I think it's really important too. Whether or not we have, there's a you do something like a question or a rating for the director on succession planning, it opens us so many more questions.
Well, actually. Well, actually, I have something to talk about later, so we can talk about succession plan. And my new business.
Okay, my new business. Um, but just putting it in this particular years, as I looked at that half of it, first of all, I want you to know, not only do I think yes, adding, um, institutional knowledge is a question. In fact, there's a proposed wording of a question, which although, oh, circle back to the actual wording. But succession planning.
Well, as I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking, is succession planning more a board function than it is a director function?
That's part of it too.
That it's really our responsibility, it's more than it is false.
It is. And the questions. Thank you. But that was part of, of the issue. Um, to adding that as in the director's evaluation. That's one. Two, who was succession? Is he talking about his own succession, department heads, the rest of staff? Uh, when I try to remember some of the questions, um, is it shortcutting looking outside the library? Or is it supposed to be so what?
Shouldn't that be part of the succession plan? Is that you're looking outside or inside?
See, those are, these are just the questions of if we put it on there without discussing.
Right, no, I, I agree. I, I, I don't have a problem with you and I have a succession plan on there because I do think it's a board. It's a function of the board. It's our job.
It's our job. It is our job to figure out the policies for anything under the director and definitely for the director.
For the director.
And, and right now, this year, considering what's going on staff wise.
Sorry, could, could you repeat that? I, but you said, could you repeat that phrase? Uh, you said the director and under the director, or did I mishear that?
I think you misheard that.
No, that's what you said.
Oh, you said under the director?
Well, is, uh, are we doing succession planning for department heads?
Well, I, I think that's, I don't think that's explicitly off our mandate. I think the director is the only one that's in our mandate.
So we're evaluating him and what he does with others. There's our job versus how are you evaluating, it's for the evaluation. Talking about evaluating his evaluation. Does he do this for them? Well, and the thing is, right now, it might be the least fair question to ask because of what's going on staff wise in the library world. People are leaving right and left and some things are literally in his control and some things aren't, and that might be. But it's certainly something I think that the administration committee needs to continue looking at, and it's a valuable question. It's, it's a valuable discussion point.
And that might be, instead of talking about succession planning for members of the staff, and one could phrase it as being, uh, staff development that that does the director create opportunities for staff to grow and develop in their careers for long term, blah, blah, blah.
I like that.
I like that question a lot.
Succession planning from the director.
So you want to that's part two, if you want to play with some wording.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, okay, um, so here's an example of a question, this again, circling back to institutional knowledge. Uh, the director keeps ongoing, squishy words, it might be, ongoing regular records of the transactions he carries out daily, comma, monthly, comma, yearly as a guidebook to requirements and workflow of this position to be used when the incumbent is not available for a longer term, and then prints said parenthesis, then a vacation. So I think that's part of the issue is that this is so anyone coming in can take up the job, knowing they're supposed to do things, when they're supposed to do it, how, how it's been done.
I'm sorry, this is per wording for that first portion of that comment, is that?
That's a potential word. It was just something that this came, what, Monday?
I think, um, what's it, last night or this morning?
So, um, it's, it's what we could do off of our heads. Um, that's again, a potential suggestion ques- suggested question that can be integrated into that. And Alex is working on it, question for the other half, but let's do part one.
Well, and then are you talking about institution? That he's making sure that he is sharing his own institutional knowledge, or is, is that he's making sure that institutional knowledge across the whole library is being?
I think it's definitely a little bit of both, right? At least for my.
Right, because that doesn't include, that's, that's basically making sure that he is, but it's not saying that he's making sure that the staff is doing the same.
When that discussion started a couple of years ago, that was the intent that we hit qualify that incredible body of knowledge everyone in this building has, so it is readily accessible in case you have to step into another role, no notice, you've got a guide to go by.
Or even if you do it with notice.
Right. Right, that there's something there for the person coming in behind you. You don't always overlap with the person who follows you.
You indicated that you had difficulties and, and.
I have lots of difficulty.
In doing the, uh, the passing on of, of knowledge.
Yes.
Great knowledge that you had.
Yes.
So then, should there be two questions? Because if we combine them, it, it gets very confusing for us as we're explaining.
I agree, it should be two different.
So that we can say, if the wording so far is okay, although it focuses on the director, if we says, we say, um, director assures that staff is
Doing whatever.
His department heads.
Yes.
Not in, not in your other comments, um, department heads are keeping identical a- and saying, keeping, um, ongoing regular records of the transactions they carry out daily, monthly, yearly as a good guidebook for their position. Just changing some of the wording, would that work?
Yes, but I mean, we're not, are we going to be able to? How, we won't be able to approve that tonight unless we actually have it bring out, will we?
Well, I'm thinking about this. Last month, we approved some editorial changes to the survey with the caveat that those edits be made. Would, would this board be willing to do the same for the director's evaluation?
I don't think that what we did with the community survey was as substantial, substantial as this.
Yeah, it was a couple of words.
I would prefer to, to to see and have people able to comment on.
What is your target date for having the director's evaluation done?
Well, we'd like to get this out within a few weeks, so we can collate the information, get the presentation and have it before June. So with that in mind, um.
I just want to break this out, so we're adding two questions, right?
Maybe three.
Maybe three, okay.
One, one on the director and institutional knowledge, one on making sure he's, that assures that he's assuring his department heads are doing the same. And then one on succession planning, but it wasn't succession.
We were taking the succession, I thought we were taking the wrong.
No, no, not succession planning, but, um, supporting and mentoring.
Oh, right, yeah.
All that, yeah, I should.
I squish those two together, so, okay.
So, yeah, no succession, not succession planning, but making sure that they, they are being mentored to move on.
That could be conflated with the one about keeping track of, um, what department heads are doing as part of their jobs. Part of what they do is, this is what I do, I codify it, and now I teach my reports about what that is and what those, uh, how will we grow into that role, what's, that could be perhaps combined into one question.
I'm trying to think of that idea.
So, so back to this question. Uh, we have at least one person who wants to wait to approve this. Um, how do others feel at least about waiting till again next month to approve this person's approving this with the caveats, if we could work out the wording? Carolyn? I'm just going to go around any.
I'm mixed because I'm not really good with oral audio. So like for you to read that aloud to me and then for me to be able to process what exactly it is you're asking, I, I just think you leave yourself open to then having it be in here and people say, that's not what I really thought it was, you know? I think it's difficult. It's, there's enough, it's wordy enough that I find it difficult. And are we, are we, I still have a question, the rest of that.
And I, I may have, may I make a process suggestion? That, uh, perhaps these questions be edited and resent out to the board, uh, within, I'll say, a week and, and then that in the following week, then there's a straw poll that's taken of the board, if they're, if they're okay with that, and then we would, would accept those, that would be enough authorization then to finalize the.
That's a little.
I mean.
It's a little gray area. It's not anything that we are required to do, uh, a formal approval. It's always nice to do a formal.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So if we don't need to have a formal approval, then we don't need to do that today.
You okay with that?
I would.
You would?
Yeah.
Keith?
Yeah, if we don't get this done by June, it gets lost in the budget and everything.
I'd rather, I'd rather. Time and trains.
Oh, 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 Zan? Are you okay with, uh, editing and doing that kind of?
Yeah. Okay, yes, absolutely.
So I'm going to, I'm going to turn this into, should I turn this into a motion?
Sure.
All right, um, that the board will review edits to the director's report after tonight's meeting.
Edit, sorry, to the director's evaluation.
Yes, thank you, on evaluation and, um, offer their approval or disapproval in, in email. Is, is it going to be ready after?
Yes.
Tonight?
It, it will be a couple of days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But before the end of the week.
Yeah, Zan, I can help you with that too.
Yeah, I can do it, I could do it tomorrow. Um, but yeah, Alex, let's, we can, we can chat, but yes, you will, you will receive it by Thursday, the absolute latest.
Thank you very much.
So do we have a second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Any names? Mark or Don? And, uh, any, obviously, we don't have any obsessions, abstentions, because we've all voted.
Wait, may I ask who Nate? I couldn't hear.
Really?
I did.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, you wouldn't necessarily recognize my voice, sorry.
No, I just couldn't, I just couldn't hear. Thank you.
Let's shake things up, talk about motions.
And Zan, I was wondering how, how the results are going to be compiled?
Um, well, I assume since we use it through the Google, I get this is just the Google, uh, survey that you guys did last year, we would just do the same thing.
Hey, I, I wanted to mention for the last two years, there have been questions about the the, uh, accuracy of the results. So I just wanted to pass that.
The accuracy of the results for a survey that only the board took?
There were a couple of places where it didn't add up to seven, in fact, it exceeded them. There was one, I think, one year, there was one question that had more than. Yeah.
It's in my car to that, she brought it in.
Is it, is it possible that some of those question, questions weren't required? And so someone was skipped it? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Not, not enough.
That's kind of fun. Yeah, it, it, it happened with one question, I think one time, and I forget what the other one was, is my recollection.
The one last year is, uh, when Keith tried to search for comments I had made, he didn't find them in the, in the results.
I figured you would ask that or bring that up. Um, I think there's a way to make sure, which is, once we look at the presentation of results that we keep it's this, I think the system will do that, where we can open up a comment section where we can all, again anonymously, make any after.
But that doesn't negate that. The results may be incorrect, they get reported.
Well, you know what?
Is, is there a way to print out, uh, the, um?
Like individual, yeah.
Is, if, if, if an, once the individual does their filled out the form, is it possible to then to print out what they have submitted?
From the, um, we can probably do, I think there's an option where you can have your, the copy of your response sent to you via email, so then you could print it from there.
But you're, but aren't you identifying who you are? Doesn't that?
It's only identifying it, how Google survey forms work like that, it's only identifying it to you, not, not the collated responses.
Or when you're filling it out, hit print on each page.
Well, you, you don't know if it's in register. The beauty of what you have is then.
Well, at least you'll have the record of what you sent in.
But, well, the, well, suggesting printing it out, you would have to do it without submitting it. That's the thing, because you can't print it after the facts, and you can print off a copy of it with your comment in it, but then not successfully submit it.
Yeah.
So I'm like your.
I don't.
Yes, I do.
I don't. I don't feel comfortable answering this question because I'm not a hundred percent sure, so unless Joy wants to answer and chime in, or if you guys, if you can wait with this email, I will have looked in the next day at the answer, because I'm, I'm not sure, and I don't want to, um, misspoke.
Thank you, Zan. Appreciate your thought on that, and, um, update us on it, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, I'm surprised just because I use Google surveys like a million times and there's never been an issue, so, uh, but yeah, Joy.
I'm glad you brought it up, Maria. I forgot about that.
It was mysterious eighth board member.
Um, but by the way, what you're saying about printing is if I fill out the page, as I'm filling it out, I hit print, and then the next page. And I know before I submit, just so I have a record of it, of what I.
But then it's, there's potential that you might not hit submit correctly and it just disappears.
That's what I'm a little worried about.
Really, if I hit print as I'm looking at a page, it wouldn't.
Well, what if you also just hit delete and then you hit submit without thinking of it?
You go back and change it and you forget to print it again or something.
You finish the survey and then you forget to hit submit, you walk away, your computer shuts down, it times out, and then you've submitted nothing.
I can think of a million reasons to come up with that, but just, hey, this is everything you told us. If you have an issue with that, it's not our fault, so.
Right. But if you can get a report after it's been submitted back to you.
That's, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah, fairly confident that we should be able to, you know, Google, Google's there to use friendly.
I think Joy wants to add in. Maybe?
What? I just, um, I can print it out however you want, just, you know, whatever you decide to do, I can print it in a graph form, like all the different ways that they have it, and I can, you know, you'll have access to it, Zan, so you'll see.
That's true, on the admin end, we could just, I, Joy can do that with that and not, it can, it won't show the names, and maybe having her do it printing the individual copies, does that?
Well, I think that's what happened the previous last year, and then there was the comment, hey, I, there's some specific comments that this person made that didn't show up on the printed copy, and then I think by the time we all saw it was at a meeting, and then it was sort of too late to say, well, I want to add that back in. You know, it'd be great to be able to have that feedback immediately after having hit submit.
Yeah.
Get something that bounces back to you and says, this is what you submitted.
Focus on the comments because that was something I could identify that was specific. But as far as the ratings went, I, you know, I didn't know whether my ratings were included or not included. Uh, but.
Or actually.
And I wouldn't be able to replicate it either after the fact.
But if you get this email report, then you would, you don't need to have a backup.
Yeah.
Zan, I can help you with that.
Yeah, just, um.
User proofing a survey.
Give me, give me a day, so I don't, uh, make any false claims here. Okay, but we will, we do not, we want this to be extremely accurate, so we don't want that to happen again.
Nine board members?
I know.
That would be nice though.
You can't do that, you're legislated, um.
Thank you, Joy.
And don't forget, we're meeting again in like a couple of weeks. And.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, not us. Okay, anything else, any other comments and issues or problems? Okay, anything else, any other comments and issues or problems?
I'm still confused by exactly what you mean by provides high level metrics reporting.
So just, what? I wrote that question, what I mean by metrics is, how many did you do? How many should you be doing? Like, it's just metrics, it's just a number that you could just trend over time.
Okay, I was confused with when you added high level. What you mean by high level?
Not even, not even.
How many you do. You know what I'm saying?
High level is just like the totality of it, not is he, is the director having regular, uh, performance evaluation? Whatever the question was, sorry, um, with department heads, with everyone else's staff, like, just the number. So that makes sense?
I'm now, I, I thought I had an understanding, it got a little fuzzy for me there, I apologize, and I, I don't quite understand the distinction with me.
So, and, and we're leaving staff in there, even though he is.
I know, he is directly only evaluating his department heads. He didn't like the way I explained it, I take it.
No, I don't think, I don't know whether it really answered the question. To make sure that everybody else does, but should that be two different questions, or should that be, no?
I think we could expand on that one.
Or yeah, if you just expand on it a little bit, just so that, because it is two different things, whether or not he's doing his own, or whether or not he's making sure. The department heads are doing the orders, theirs are.
Right, no, I appreciate that.
And how would you want that expanded?
Just clarifying. Direct reports and then ensuring direct reports are doing that with their reports. So that makes sense to them? I, I, I see it, so I can.
Well, I know, right, and, and so no one's going to be confused that you're, we're looking at this as a whole.
Unless you think it should be two questions, but.
If we did that, we did, we would do everything as two questions, three questions, and it's, it's part of his leadership, and that's what it's about, the director's.
Right, but they are two different.
Depends how far we want to be reading this.
No, I just want to make sure that when we get to, because this is part of the problem we had last year as well, is I don't think we were all sure about what we were. Rating in some of the questions, as long as we're all on the same page when we're looking at this question and realize what we're rating, then I don't have a problem with it. Don't you remember that? I mean, we had some questions about, is it, are we rating Paul, are we reading how the library is doing, how, you know, there was some.
Can I, can I proffer some, some alternative language for you?
You certainly.
Obviously, every single question says the director, um, conducts, documents, regular performance evaluations of their direct reports. Ensures their reports conduct similar exercises. Well, I love fixing things in the moment.
Anything else? So we just try to make sure that once you get all the edits that we can move forward to. We're trying really hard to keep this moving.
Thank you.
And make this work. All right. You're back on, director's report.
Well, we covered the annual report.
Thank you.
I have submitted our memorandum of intention. Um, stating our interest in participating in the Upper Hudson Library System Equity Challenge. The U H L S Equity Committee has identified eight areas of library operations. And compiled action items and resources in each of these areas. To help participating libraries become more inclusive, equitable institutions. There are. Funds that were identified by Upper Hudson. Uh, and for each section that the library completes, um, we receive five hundred dollars. If we do all eight of them, of course, we receive four thousand dollars. Wow. And I have asked Christine Javon to head up the committee. For the Equity Challenge.
Have the board members be included in that committee or not?
They can be, yes. Figure it out. We're, we're gonna try to tackle the easier. Challenges first, as we go along. If there's interest, sure. As you can see, we started construction on the Northwest Parapet Mall out there. The scaffolding is complete, and they're starting to do the work on the rest of the project. Unfortunately, I sort of. Uh, was optimistic about the completion of the job, but.
Three months?
They told me it's gonna take about three months.
You Freda.
Have a good night, Freda.
That's A J S and not A L S, by the.
So, so when was it communicated that the timeframe was changing significantly?
That's their timeframe.
Yeah, but they, they had originally said three weeks. You said three weeks.
That was my timeframe. I was wrong.
And I'm readily admitting it.
I was surprised. But anyway.
So no parking for three months?
Did cover Lansingburg. Going on to the main library roof leak. As you know, we experienced a bit of water coming in the area that was repaired in twenty twenty-three up in the reading room. So I asked. I asked our contractor from last year to. That's a Greco construction to come in and at least take a look to see what they thought, because. They also insulated the roof drain in that area, and there's four big roof drains. That go down through, uh, where the reading room is on the ceiling. And it was felt that one of the causes of the slower water seepage was condensation on that roof drain. Um, so when we did the work last year, the drains were insulated, so they had some familiarity with the drains. And I wanted to know what they thought about whether those drains are leaking, because that would have been a larger operation. We were up in the roof, it looked as if where the E P D M roof meets the. East Parapet Wall. It's attached to the East Parapet Wall. By a metal strip. And it looks like that attachment. Um, was worn to the point where water could easily seep down into the, the seam. So they recommended, and, and we did, co- all the way around that seam. I don't know if it was a true test, but it rained after that, and I did not get additional leaking. We will be able to tell towards the end of this week again.
Yes.
We should have a good deal of rain, at least, but Thursday and Friday, maybe.
I would just like to hear about a leak.
The buckets, you know, the buckets will be in place. And they're still in place, and we'll have a, a good idea measuring whether we have any problem, they still have a problem.
Who's in charge of emptying, emptying them out and then rechecking them?
Well, they're pretty big.
Oh, they're huge.
We have a long time before we actually attend you.
You need to go from zero to.
Robert has taken on that, that job. Keep an eye on the buckets.
Do we have an update on? The status of the roof replacement project for?
I, we have been asking for, yes, the bidding documents, and I have been talking to that to get them done.
She told me she hadn't started yet. She said she'd just gotten authorization to start.
My director, my director.
Sounds like, uh, why needs to go before we get there?
Do, do you know how long the process typically takes, just for my own?
Yeah, depends what else they've got going on. He's got nothing else to do. Could take. Could take a couple of weeks, but. Why is a couple of weeks, you know, I guess?
That sucks.
Yeah, I, what's unfortunate is I think we've been talking about this roof, the replacement of this roof here for several months. We were talking about holding off the actual construction until after the cornice reconstruction was complete. Uh, but I. You know, we did talk about. The desire to get out in a good time of year for bidding and this being a. Desirable bidding climate now, rather than trying to bid work for roofing work in June and July. And we did talk about the potential for roofs and. Back in October, we said there were no repair or leaks, but obviously, conditions have changed. I wish we were further ahead on this process.
Yeah, we talked about this extensively last, even last year.
So, yeah, October, November.
Anyway. During the week of Marshalle Heath, Virginia, West, participated in a conference in Brooklyn sponsored by the Urban. Librarians Unite. Uh, and those are the people who had completed the Urban Library Trauma Study. Uh, this conference was, the purpose was to design. And develop a. Worker Support Network. Um, which was a result of the. Uh, Urban Library Trauma Study. I don't know, Virginia, maybe you could. Expand on that a bit?
Sure, um, I was just thinking, everybody read the Urban Libraries Trauma Study, I would. I've mentioned that before. Um, one of the first initiatives that is coming out of that trauma study was one of the main recommendations that came. And that was to create a nationwide library workers work network. That would potentially interrupt the cycle of trauma, that would give people places to come. Where they could work out what they need for themselves in a safe place, and people who would understand what they're experiencing. Um, so with this current grant, um, there is a small group of us, the peer leaders, who are the kind of prototype. We are literally creating this network, how it's going to run, it's infrastructure and training is needed. Uh, making sure all the peer leaders are equipped to handle this. Uh, my group specifically is working on the logistics and structure, so we're creating all the backbone of this network. Um, and all of us are working towards ending by the end of the summer to have everything in place with the new training infrastructure. All our groups are in scheduling to launch in September, and this, um. We will work on this project, we're contracted until July twenty twenty-five. Um, at that time, who knows what will happen, depends on funding and where we are. But the goal of this, as I said, is to create a safe place for library workers, it'd be the first of its type. Um, specifically being available to library workers. But it's, uh, if you think about it, what does that mean? So you think about, uh, and at this time, everything will be virtual, which makes it available nationwide. You think about like model about, you know, if you've ever intended a peer support network, a group like an A A meeting, some people are more familiar with. It's not specifically that, but using that existing model that is viable. Uh, so it's just a place where once a person gets registered to participate in meetings, they will be able to join at a comfort level with anonymity. Uh, if they choose, and they can participate in anybody, including just listening, you know, that are joining the conversation. Um, this has not been to replace any professional pair, either mental health, legal or otherwise. Um, it's just as a way for people who need to be heard and understood at the same place while they figure out. What they need after a traumatic or adverse event at, in the library setting. Um, our goal is to be accessible to all library workers at all levels, but we do want to have a few affinity groups. Which may, um, in most have not been distinguished yet, but our goal is to have a few of those available on the launch. Um, with the intention of creating the infrastructure that we make this, um, able to expand as we go and make it more sustainable, such as. Training new, um, peer group leaders, so that we can expand, replace, um, prevent burnout with a more strong group. Um, and we are also working on the internal structure and how to support each other, as I said, prevent that burnout. Um, over simulation and kind of giving ourselves ways to, um, absorb in these. As well, so it's a big undertaking, a great group of people. Uh, we're all working collectively, remote from all over the country, from the kinds of libraries, from. And various roles, including social workers, middle management, lower level, entry level, students. Even library students, so it's, it's an amazing project, um, I'm happy to talk about it. But really, the goal is to launch in September and run from September to Ju- uh, July of next year. Um, with this group and decide before that how we're going to proceed going forward. Um, with appropriate points along the way, where we will pause, survey, um, and revise what we need to make sure that we. Give this prototype, um, its best chance of sustainability going forward.
Yeah, thank you so much, Virginia.
I'm very excited about this project, and I really just want to thank Paul, um, for allowing me this space to grow in this, to make this work. And supporting that ability, um, you know, it, you know, colleagues today explain who goes away for a week and goes to Brooklyn. No shame on Brooklyn, it has lots of fun things to do there. But it, you know, a lot of, um. A lot of directors, and I learned this from being in my group, even just a small amount of us that will be this kind of inaugural group. Um, they don't, you don't really see that kind of support in all levels. Um, a lot of my colleagues are doing this on their own time, they're not being supported by their directors and management to. Do this as part of their job, or, um, in ways to enrich their job, or. Um, their coworkers even, and support them in that way, so I act, you know. It's, it's kind of a big deal, sitting there with, you know, sixteen to twenty-four of us at dead ties, and realizing. You know, it really is not as expected, you know, other, it's probably about fifty, fifteen. So I just wanted to thank that, and then in turn, the board as well for, um, to make those decisions.
No, thank you, Virginia, yeah, like this, this seems fascinating and absolutely useful to see, being aware of like an extremely small fraction. Of unfortunate incidents that happen here. I'm emboldened to see that you care about it so much, to do something and include. Um, a network of people over the country and building something together, um, I think that's extremely valuable, so.
Thank you, I was excited to see how I can scale that down and improve day to day here. Um, as not just my role as largest department here, but also in state committee and, um, as support and admin, so. Self identification, so it could be five, LGBTQ, religion, defamation, it could also be, um, physician in library. So, um, some of our group's members might not be comfortable if there are board or, um, excuse me, a board's workers, directors in the meeting. Excuse me, our board's workers, directors in the meeting. Um because they may be able to share effectively, um so some groups may say, you know, you know, high level management. But high level management, we welcome that and we have the roots. And I'm just using that example, but.
Seems like it's a. Positive uh. Or it could help with the long term. Um. Team building longevity within the organization. Uh that. If people have issues that they need to be able to. Talk through some way, this would be another way of helping with that process.
I mean, I think so, with the trauma study, it was one of the biggest reiterations from not just the like these movement surveys, but anecdotally. Um that just not having that level of understanding work.
Yeah.
So I I may have access to mental health services on my own, but I still need to spend half of my time explaining. The dynamics.
Right.
Where if I speak to another library employee, I can say something like. Y P F came out and surf was not paying attention, my friend's getting downstairs and then all of a sudden, somebody was. You know, flying through, having it from the bathroom. And now I have to stop and explain what Y P F is, why they're different, why they're not out here, the expectation of goals and management. And just being able to just, you know, you think your book group, if you just found that everybody knows what the story is about and you just talk about. And how it attracted you, that's literally what we want to create, so that. Every person has a safe place to explore and again, the goal is to interrupt that level of trauma cycle. So that we're not really traumatized, we are buoyed by not supporting them appropriately and that doesn't have to be. One on me, I may not be the right person, but we can attract two or somebody who may be a better fit. So I I'm really excited about this project, um I would probably see it through as far as I can, as long as I can, um. And uh you know, a lot of support from even boards. As we go forward will be good because the more people that speak about it and the easier it might be to secure funding, to make it long term. Um and to develop our prototype, um to expand, um you know, to potentially more groups, more times available. Longer groups, bigger groups, and eventually maybe in personal groups or things like that that just aren't viable right now. And oh, it's gonna need a lot of buy-in because as I said, this doesn't exist any other way right now. And without us making a big splash, nobody else will notice.
Thank you so much, Virginia.
Thanks.
One additional thing, um we're scheduling an in-service um half-day in-service on May seventeenth. Um with the idea of covering or kind of backing up and covering some of um procedures. Um. You know, that some of the newer people might be unfamiliar with, but um. Also a reminder to some of the longer-serving. Yeah. Um and things like um. You know, calling for backup um. In uh in for incidents, um. Incident reporting, um. And things like um evacuation procedures and that sort of thing, we'll do some role playing. Um. Expect to um. Uh. Be in session from nine to to one on uh May seventeen. That's about it.
Thank you, Paul.
Please, please running the program. Um speaking about incident reports. You're gonna do a little bit each month?
I don't have anything.
There were no incidents?
What's that?
There were no incidents?
No, that's not true, I just don't have a count.
Okay.
Sorry, there is no count.
Okay, um. Any questions about the director's report? So whole new business and to start it off, I just want to say to everybody, Happy Libraries Workers Day.
Yes, not just happy, but thank you for being such wonderful workers. Troy Public Library has an excellent staff. Let me think of. Baking cookie.
Okay, I know some people have said that they have um. Something for new business.
Oh, you're gonna be sorry.
Well.
So I I'm not sure if anybody else attended the trustee handbook book club meeting. What's new in the handbook? And I have to say that.
Didn't read it, they changed the font.
I have to say, the meeting, the meetings are always excellent, uh you know, if you haven't attended any of them, I I know a lot of people have, but if you haven't, they do a. A wonderful job and Rebecca knows her stuff inside it. But as you did, she did write the book, stay along with a few other people.
The next book, I think that came up.
So and these are just things that as we went through it, and I have to say. For me, it was good to do this because when you're a new trustee, I think it's a lot to take in when you first do the training. Because you don't really have kind of the reference points, but in going through this. I realized that some, there's some things that we're not doing that we should be doing and. So I just wanted to bring, I don't think it's something we need to. Address it exactly at this moment, but I do think it needs things that um. We should be looking at, so first off, it said, they said that all policies that the board. Creates that have anything to do with patrons must be online and available to the public. And I don't believe we have all of our policies online.
There's a lot of things, you don't have to, policy-wise, period, unright.
Um this was something that I thought was interesting, she said, this was Rebecca, she said, any committee meeting that has more than. Two board, two or more board members on it automatically comes up under open meeting loss.
Yes.
So that all agendas, all minutes, all, everything needs to be posted to the website. In the same timeframes.
For committees?
That's what she said.
Have to go over that again, and see the C O G says again.
I did, I did ask him to. Fair.
We get the minutes on the. In the public, I forget the.
We get it, but I don't know whether it's on the website. Are all the documents where they are when you do the.
All packets going in and everything that's been written is is going up.
The agendas don't all go on.
That's true.
That's what she said. And and I mean, we can look that up or we can check, but she said as if there's more than two. Yeah.
That is true, I'm not sure about.
She said that the agendas need to be on there, whatever, is it twenty-four hours before or more than forty hours before? So.
I just.
Um the other thing is that the board should be uh conducting a self-evaluation.
Ooh.
We have never done and and. And to go along with that, that we should have a code of conduct for board members. And because how can you do evaluation if you don't have a code of conduct to know whether or not we're.
We have it posted like we have it in the library.
Well, the first, the number one thing is, the number one thing is that we abide by the code of conduct for library patrons. But yeah, so that, you know, that there should be a code of conduct for how we. Present ourselves.
Oh, that's interesting.
Um.
Would it be different than the code contacting for?
Yes, it would, I looked at Kingston has one that's pretty in-depth and there's a lot that goes into that that goes beyond. Um there, there is. Um. I didn't realize that we should all be participating in sexual harassment training every year.
Yes.
I do it for my work.
Right, but what if we don't? How are we doing that? I don't have, is there a vehicle that we're using? I haven't thought of it.
We can get into the library's sexual harassment of.
Are we all aware that we're supposed to be doing?
That it came as a surprise to me.
Yeah. I didn't know we're supposed to be doing it every year and are we checking that we're doing it every year?
That, no.
They, she said that they're starting to do audits. And that we, it would be very embarrassing for a library to have not done the, in addition to the two hours of. Continuing education training that we're supposed to be doing, have done the sexual harassment.
You're saying it'd be in addition to, or could be.
It is, no, it's in addition, you have to do two hours plus. Sexual harassment training. I'm sure if you do it at your work, you can probably.
I was, I did, I have to, I have to demonstrate a report.
Right, you just have to give a certificate, but I mean, I'm retired.
Be happy to do it before.
We don't do it together, you do it online, so it's all done individually. So if you've done someplace else, that was determined a few years ago, if you've done it someplace else, you don't have to do it again, like.
Right.
Done it someplace else and therefore we didn't have to do it here.
Right, but I've done it someplace else, but I haven't done it here because now I'm retired and it has to be done every year.
That's a different story, but last time this came up, it's everyone pretty much had done it someplace else and then.
I haven't done it since I've been at the board member.
I haven't done it nearly. I know we do it yearly.
I haven't done it yearly, I haven't.
I didn't line through the fire department yearly.
Right, but she, I mean, he would have to, these, you would have to have their certificates, saying. She was pretty adamant about. So what I. Um.
Thank you for finding these things out and sharing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm happy to work on it. Actually, it was really good meeting and I, she, Rebecca is, she's phenomenal, I mean, she knows her stuff and. A lot of good, good conversations.
This is why I keep pushing everybody to to sign up for them and if you can't make it to date, it's.
They're recording, they're recording.
Go to the recording, they're all archived there for for the last X years. They're all there.
You sort of missed the, sorry, oh, I didn't real, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay, I'm done.
Um Kingston Public Library had a good code of conduct?
Yes, they did, cool, I can share that with.
I was, I was gonna bring up.
Yeah, I printed out, so.
Oh, amazing.
But I can just send you a link to.
Thank you.
I have it. It's it's pretty extensive, I mean, it's. Pages. So it is, and the first thing is just to to follow in this, you know, that you have to abide by. Um. The code of conduct for patrons, but then it it says that you're doing evaluations, you know, you're doing a self-evaluation of the board, that you're. Participating in all sorts of different strategic planning metric, you know. So it goes beyond, so it gives you, it really does give you a way to do a self-evaluation if you have the code coming.
I was down in Kingston the other, the other day and I wanted to go to the library, but I missed it, but a little bit. Uh I saw they were doing a lot of work there too.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I did bond it, I think, I know.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Yes. So that was my new business.
Cool.
Okay, thank you.
They did have, they did mention this other thing and I I don't think that it applies to us, but they talked about pilot. So it's payment in lieu of taxes, if anybody makes a payment in lieu of tax to the city of Troy, that the library is entitled to some of that money.
Whoa.
Um.
Well, that's.
We do get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the?
Do you concur with that?
We get pilot money? From the city of Troy? Payment in lieu, if somebody makes a payment in lieu of taxes to the city of Troy, we get a portion of it. From the library.
Um. We haven't received any lately.
I mean, we're, we're.
We're entitled to it.
Part of our taxes, uh. That we get, we get taxes.
Right.
Somebody would have to look further into it, but it was something, they said some libraries. It was a significant amount of money that they got.
Albany wasn't getting it for a while.
Yeah.
And. That was addressed.
I know Troy, RPI is payment in lieu of taxes, for instance.
Right, so are we getting, just to make sure that we're getting.
I'm curious about that mechanism and that's just through my ignorance of tax collecting and dispersment.
Right.
Is Kingston the same type of libraries we are?
Oh, that wasn't a Kingston thing, that was just uh at at the meeting. The Mid Hudson, they were talking about different, different libraries have gotten payments from that in a in a significant amount of money.
But now all libraries have seen. Structures are like.
Correct, you would have to be a district library or a municipal library or. You'd have to be supported in right taxes, you know. A tax-supported one.
Do we get a, in our, in our um, the tax payments that we get from the city, do we get a breakdown or do we just get a number?
No, it's a breakdown, yeah. Um. We get the report.
Okay.
Um it includes, you know, current and previous years and.
And it would, it would have.
Names and addressing, I guess, I guess mostly my, well.
So we can go knock on the door.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty much, that's, that's all public information, um but. Um, I guess my question is, do we, does it show whether money comes from pilots, you know, mostly, I'm just curious.
No, I took it back over, I haven't seen any.
Think it does, but. I don't, I'm sorry, I haven't seen that report, but I.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
Looked at the tax rolls.
Nothing lately. I don't. I don't know how many payments in lieu of taxes there is in this city.
Yeah, I don't know either, but when they brought it up, I thought.
May not be a big. Issue.
RPI, I think is.
I can make.
Doing.
Including taxes.
Yeah, I mean, they brought it up, it seemed like it was worth.
I thought this came up in the past.
Not, not.
Not, not while you were on the board, but early on.
Yeah. Oh, I can. Don't go find out.
That's my new business.
Thank you, that's actually very stimulating. I mean, it's good to, it's good to think of them.
So. So Evelyn, you will share with us the sexual harassment thing, because I'll just, I mean, I just want to make sure I get my, okay, I want to make sure. You know, and I really think they should rename it because sexual harassment training just sounds like you're promoting it rather than.
Preventing.
Right, right, that's what it should be, something like that, anti.
The sentence drifting off, what do you want me to um?
Is there a way to just share with the board members?
The list.
How we, yes.
Oh, the link, sure, of course.
So then we can get that done.
Let's take a little break.
When I do my self-evaluation, I can say.
I did it, I do. Well, you know, well, it isn't part of what we do for the L B and that's that. Or a spreadsheet, but I can make it into the spreadsheet. Too, that, you know, just put a little addition, so we were keeping track of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Sorry, I just want to write that down before I forget. We're in Thursday, be second. Same. Here, but. Was uh.
Okay, thank you. Um anybody else for the, before I. Start with a couple of other things, uh have new business or old business?
I have old business. I think that was my new business, that I have old business.
Okay, why don't we do your old business and then I'll get to the other things, our new business.
So I just to update you on the survey for the salary survey, it's pretty much complete, I'd shared it with Paul, so. If Marie or Paul needs to use it to come up with a new salary schedule or if Paul needs it. He has what we have and hopefully that is enough.
And don't forget, join.
And join.
Libraries that talks were very helpful.
Well, they were enjoyed really to this area, so I think that's more valuable.
Yes.
Um since we're probably competing more with a limited area.
Yes.
But look, one of our newest hires wasn't anywhere. If that two of our hires weren't anywhere from this area. Was no longer here, but the other is on on uh behind the desk, maybe not as we speak, but is here, she was definitely over there. Um. But still, our salaries have to match.
So I am considering that complete unless you find that was what the information we gave you is not enough.
Calculate all the averages and see what that looks like.
Okay. And then the other thing, which is old business, and I'm sure you're, you're just gonna be like. Annoying with me, but we still have no mission statement. It's with me here.
Maybe the mission statement.
One came up recently, I'm trying to remember which, which conver- conversation, it was probably admin.
I think I was like, I.
Yeah.
Came up at one of the like three admin committee meetings we've had.
So it's nothing forgotten, it just, we need to come up with a series and figure out how we're gonna get people to decide on the words and what they want from it. Is it all they ever speak, is it something quick and easy to remember, is it?
Right, but we just need to do it.
We do, but you know, Carol, there's so much stuff.
I know, but I I I think everything we do has to come from the mission statement, so we don't have a mission statement and then it's.
Foundational, I like it.
We have an old one that we wanted to update and we started updating it over a year ago and then we never did anything.
Yeah. So we saw the old one, we don't have a new one.
It's still yours.
Right.
It bugged.
You can see.
Right.
So if people don't want to.
So I guess I misspoke and I said we don't have one, we haven't had.
Well, it's not a bad one and it's not totally outdated, we just needed a new thing and people in different. Well, it's not a bad one, and it's not totally outdated, we just needed a new thing and people had different ideas of what the mission statement should be, and we went around and around and around. And we needed to get that long-range plan done. So, and if you talk to, um, the person who we had as a consultant once said, you know what you're doing, we don't have to do this. I did not agree with that statement, trust me, I did not agree with it, but.
And then we, and then the financial statement that I gave you, that piece of paper, that wasn't intended, did we ever?
Would you like to know how many other things I've been working on right now?
No, I'm not, I'm just, you know, I mean.
It's in, it's in this pile of things, I have to get to, Carol.
Okay, I'm just.
Carol, you piqued my curiosity when you said financial.
Oh, it was when we, we, we worked on the financial, and this was a while ago, it was before Alex and these guys were on here. Um, we, we, we worked on. Amending, changing, uh, the financial.
We revised it.
We revised it. But it's not anywhere. It's not on the website, it's not in the Dropbox, it's not. I don't know.
We finished it.
You guys did it and it disappeared.
And I don't know if it just appears, but it's something I had to go look back, Carol and found some papers, but.
I was cleaning out my desk.
Oh.
And I found the papers, and then I couldn't find the policy that were with.
Physical media is the best way to archive editing. Stalwart advocate.
Now Evelyn has my papers, though, I gave them out to her.
They're all with me on the papers, they're in. Sorry, yes, if you can find it, I would appreciate seeing it.
I don't, yeah, I don't have it, I gave it to Evelyn. I, I should have, but I just thought, I, you know, I should have, I should have taken a copy of that, just because.
I have them, they're in safekeeping, if you want, I'll, I'll sort of, I'll scan and send them back to you. I don't know what you want.
All I'm saying is that it should be on.
You find them? Can you scan them?
I'm not going to find them.
Well, when you.
She gave me, I have them.
When you go, because you don't literally have them right now. So when you, when you access the pile of papers that they're in, could you scan them and then send them to the board?
No, I have to come back down and scan, you understand, I don't have a scanner.
That's.
Take a photograph of your phone.
Right now, okay.
Thank you.
That is not gonna be done today, or tomorrow, or even Friday, I will tell you that, there's other things that.
I understand that, but it's, you know, but it has been numerous months. Since we made the change to the.
Oh, till since we made the changes, but since you gave me those papers and said, put this on. That was recent. What did that really clear for people who are listening, Carol?
And was this in, at a board meeting that it was printed?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it was a while ago.
Or hope so.
Yes.
Should be.
Yeah, it just, the policy should be in our Dropbox at least. And it's not. That's it. Sorry.
Are you sure there's anything, nothing else?
I think that's it. I've extended this meeting long enough. Sorry.
All right.
Well, thank you.
I didn't, I didn't know these things existed, so I like.
Taking the me, taking the class. Honest to God, it made me like really start, let's clean up my desk. To be honest. I was like, should I throw this away, are we done with this? And then I, that's what made me think, okay, I'll look and see.
Never.
Well, please, not to die.
Does anyone else have any new, and our old business? Okay.
I, I, I do have, I don't, some clarifications, I, I think I said earlier that I spoke with Tab today, I spoke with Tab yesterday.
So we should clarify that?
Yes, and then, uh, I had said that I'd sent out an email on the. Twentieth asking it be included in the agenda. It was on the twentieth, and then again, on the. Fifth of April. Uh, the fifth of April email was not to the entire board, it was just to pull in to the president. So I had.
And you said the same thing?
I, I.
I'll check back.
I did, yeah.
April five. Checking it.
Again, you know, you've heard my comments, and just reiterate them every time you say it. Okay.
And I just want to keep the record, if it, if it appears that I. Failed to include something in the minutes, you can always contact me.
No, you, you.
Promise it's not.
I, I did, I did look at the minutes, and. I wasn't at the meeting, so. It looked, it looked fine from what I could read. And, and I, I watched the video, so.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm mostly in reference to your letter, because I miss, I miss.
That was after the minutes.
Yes.
Anybody else? Are we sure? Okay, so. Here we go. Um. One. Started thinking about the election. Even though it's September, it's never too early to kind of worry about this. Um. What's gonna happen with Lansingburg will affect what we do, because we do one of the meet the candidates bud, budget. Sharing the budget at Lansingburg, two, it's a, it's an election site. Also. So you mean what happens is whether or not it has a ramp? Or what do you mean? It might not even be a problem with the ramp, it means, are we going to use it as an election site, where are we gonna put the actual box? So people can have, um, some confidentiality in. Um, they can't use the MacArthur Room, right? Chester Arthur Room. You know where that's coming from.
We don't have a MacArthur Room, thank God.
No, we just get a book party.
Rants. We all, oh, okay. I was gonna say, we also don't have a McCarthy Room.
Brand, so if they want the room, they can have it. That's right. You know how much they give us?
I know, I know, I'm just teasing.
They're very good to us.
For the record.
Um. We don't have the Chester Arthur Room. We might, may or may not have it in September. Um, so those are things we have to start considering and thinking and figure out what we're gonna do. Uh, we might want to also look on when we're going to have and hold this election. It's usually September, usually the board. Prefers have. Think it on a Tuesday, and that the board prefers having it at the end of the month to give us more time. So that would be September twenty fourth. I looked up at least certain religious holidays. Something comes up on my calendar, usually those. Well, well, then talk to Nyla, who did not realize that it was Passover when they scheduled. Spring on the Hill, it was the first day of Passover, they said you didn't show up on my Google Calendar. Well, well, surprise, guess what, it's still there. Um, which may be very interesting, since lunch is included. Um, oh. At least we're not hitting anything that people will start yelling at us for holding it on. Uh, major holidays or what they call Yom, because it is in the middle of Zuko. So. We don't have to approve this now, but the twenty fourth, if anyone has any objections, let's, let's hear them now, and then we can actually put this as. An agenda item for next month.
Twenty fourth of September.
Twenty fourth of September.
Sensibly sounds good.
All right.
That's a non-binding affirmation.
Okay, and you still prefer having it towards the end, because usually you are being proponent, but proponent of doing it later in the month.
Sure, sounds good to me, okay. Dan?
Oh, that's.
I forgot you're there, really?
Yes.
Okay. So we can put this as an agenda item, at least to set the date. And we can start the motions, and then we just really need to figure out what we're gonna do about. Poll locations. There's nothing that tells us we have to do it. In two places. It just makes it easier for people, we'll just have, and hopefully, hopefully, the three months is a more accurate timeframe, and there'll be some parking, and we can do something about parking. For people who are prefer going to Lansingburg because of the parking.
I don't know if we're gonna talk about it now, but I, I wouldn't entertain limiting the amount of polling places we have. I would also be in favor of expanding it with any of our community partners.
That's another possibility.
We don't necessarily need to talk about that right now, but I'm absolutely in favor of that. People are more likely to vote, easier it is for them, so.
That will be, we prefer obviously doing it in the library, it just draws people. To it, and we'll probably just use a league of women voters to do it. Um, again, but. That might be something we need to do. Unless anybody now has an objection to that idea, before we start looking into some. What, what's in the Chester Arthur room, we know, is it all just storage, storage, and is it chocolate? As I said, it's, uh, at least a third phone. Okay.
Snap, I think they're also using it as a break room, so.
Yeah, right, which would be, I mean, we could still use it, use it for one day, but not if there's a lot of stuff in there.
That was the last time I booked, so who knows what's going on there now.
Okay. Because I would hate to have it not be at the end of the week. I think people would be upset. I think people would be upset if it wasn't at Lansingburg, if we didn't use Lansingburg.
I think it kind of drives home the point, too. Need the budget, you know, look at our building.
And space, we have the budget, we have so many names. Okay, so that was one thing, um. And the other was. It didn't. The basics are included in the. President's Upper Hudson Report, but you want to talk about too, um. The Schenectady County Public Library and their six-month notice of leaving. And again, wording, and it's in the president's report. Oh, no. Um. Please consent agenda. The, the president's report wasn't discussed, I'm meaning. The Schenectady County Public Library, given their six-month notice. That they are. Separating from the automation, joint automation, JS. System, um. One of the things that I was, that was referred to with the T U article, is that they were looking at Upper Hudson. In that same article, Southern Adronic Library System, Sal's was also mentioned. I don't know, we're looking at most students, I don't know what else is going. What else they are doing. There are certainly talks going on at Upper Hudson. Um. You've been to the Directors Association, the DA, discussion about it?
I have, yes.
I want to share some of the thing, I mean, there's a thousand questions.
Well, it's very early stages, it's very much in a discussion stage, I'm. Sort of surprised that Schenectady giving six months notice. Without a Plan B, but that's, I guess, their business. Um, the automation system, of course, uh, involves almost everything we do. Uh, in the library in terms of, uh. The circulation and in terms of, um, all the other things that we do. So it's kind of critical. Going out on your own is rather expensive. Um, although. Uh, in this day and age, Schenectady could probably do it. Um. But they have asked. Upper Hudson if they would consider. Schenectady joining our. Upper, upper, yeah, our system. Um, there's a lot of questions in terms of, I mean, that would be a very large impact on volume. Um, I don't know, I mean, we need to answer questions about, um, you know, whether that affects. Um, staffing levels, whether it affects equipment, um. And, uh, these are some, some things that the, um, Upper Hudson Board are gonna have to, you know, deal with and answer questions on. Um. I think we have questions as directors. Um, I think we have a long history. Of very excellent cooperation, um. You know, with our automated system. And we've got twenty-nine member libraries, and. We all seem to be able to get along and agree on. Um, you know, things. And we also have a great deal of flexibility. Um, which. NVLS does not have quite as much flexibility. And that's Schenectady's real problem. So they sort of envy our flexibility, and I think that was an attraction, uh, to them, and, uh, one of the reasons that they made the inwards. Um. But I think. You know, does this. Kind of throw a wrench in our works? Um, does this? There's a system that large coming into our system. You know, create. Maybe dissonance in terms of getting along with, um. You know, how the system works and. So on, so it, there's, there's a lot of concerns that we have. And I think that the Upper Hudson Board. In making their decision, have to listen carefully to the Directors Association.
At, um, the Directors Association meeting, I just read the Times Union article, um, did they offer up any motive for this? Who, the Schenectady County Library Association, what, what, what's their motive for leaving joint automation? It, it doesn't get into that.
Not enough flexibility.
That's, that's the, that's the only reason?
That's their, yeah, and I don't have, none of us have any of the details, okay.
I wasn't sure if they talked about it there. Because that's an interesting.
That is the overall idea of why they wanted to leave the system, for example, let's take one small thing. Um. The, um. Okay, if you're, if your fines, or your, the money that you owe the library is greater than, um. Five dollars, and this is in. NVLS. You can't take material out of the library, so this is a rule that goes to all members of NVLS. Um. And Schenectady wants to make it ten dollars. Well, they can't, because the rule there for every library is the same, see, we don't really operate that way. We don't operate where everybody has to do the same thing. So Schenectady feels that we have the flexibility that they're looking for.
Yeah, that's, that's really interesting, thank you for expanding on that.
That's, that's. And we understand that that's the motivation, but like I said, we don't have all of those details as to. You know, what goes on in Schenectady County.
My concern is that. The current member libraries. Not. Take a cost impact because Schenectady wants to come, if they want to come, they better bring cash.
Well, this is something that would have to be considered, of course, by Upper Hudson's board.
Well.
Is there an expense involved, because.
Of course there is.
With the automation system, now we pay a quarterly, a fee to Upper Hudson. But the fees that the twenty-nine member libraries pay does not actually pay for the automation system. So what does that mean for somebody like Schenectady who's not a member of Upper Hudson? Wouldn't they be, I mean, since we are members of Upper Hudson, Upper Hudson pays a larger share of that automation system. What happens when you have a non-member come into that situation?
They don't want to join the Upper Hudson Library System.
We don't know, that's this, and I'm gonna clarify a little bit from. The board perspective, and tomorrow, we're gonna learn a whole lot more about some of the details.
Where?
But they are leaving the. Automation system, which means in a way they are leaving Mohawk Valley Library System, that's what MLBS is, Mohawk Valley. Um. At this point, are they thinking about becoming members, or they just? Wanted to broach Upper Hudson about joining the automation system, which is different.
Yeah.
Um, and the. Boards are going to have to make that decision of the, what steps? If A, then will, at some point, they become a member, or are they, what kind of? Um, like you said, what, where are they bringing in fee-wise? To take what it would cost to do all this, who's gonna pay for it, how's it gonna be paid for? So.
What the Directors Association, too, is saying that, um. Having Schenectady involved in our automation system is not a final solution. Um, it's sort of a stopgap thing. Um, and if that's something that works. Then the idea would be for Schenectady County to join the Hudson Library System. In, in the long run. Not immediately, but.
And they have more than one library, they have the main, and they have several branches, too. Let's see, now, it's not just one, so this is.
The whole county.
It's a county system.
The newspaper said that they had nine branches, which, considering that it's the whole county, that's not. The newspaper said that they had nine branches, which considering that it's a whole county, that's not a lot.
They go as far as Delanston, they go to Missyuna. It's going to be interesting.
And I, and they're kind of hanging out those small libraries that are part of their system currently. To dry, aren't they? I mean, to take a, a bigger, the biggest library and pull it out.
Which was the question, what's going to happen to MLBS?
If you look at how many libraries are in Rensselaer County, I mean, the countywide system is much larger.
Oh, no, there, there's a lot of it. So, um, what?
Sorry.
What, um, the. What Tim Burke was doing with the DA is compiling questions and he'll compile questions tomorrow, come up with an FAQ. And start getting some of the answers. I mean, it's six months can go very quickly. But they put in their six month notice. And, um.
Do you know the director there, Paul? Do you know?
No, I don't. I don't. I don't think she's been there.
I was gonna say she's relatively new.
Yeah.
I don't think she's making friends.
No, when I talk to the person from Schenectady with them. We, we have an employee. An ex-employee over there.
You do?
Actually, we have more than one. We've got two at least. We've got, um.
It's Dave.
And we've got Amy.
In the library world, this is sort of shocking.
This is what Tim called unprecedented, uncharted waters. This has never, ever happened before. So, um, this is just to put everyone on notice because at some point this might affect, affect us too, which is also why it was combined in the tail. Um. What's going on there will. Affect us too. You know, the fans, you know, delivery system. Like I said, there, there's so, so many questions and every time a question's answered, there's another question that comes right behind it. Okey dokey.
I got a lot of minutes to read.
Consolidate or take things from the other reports. Okay, um, community feedback.
Brett up always leaves before I bring this up, but people greatly anticipate the reopening of the bookseller in Lansingburg. Um, and now I guess I have a tentative date that I can offer up, so.
Yeah.
I just want to tell her that people, young and old, always ask me like, oh, Lansingburgs. Well, I'm like, they're like, where's the bookseller? I'm like.
Yeah.
Now I have an answer, so.
They're having a pop up on April fourteenth at the farmer's market. Fifty people are looking. It'll be surveyed now.
Excellent. I'll, I'll let people know that too.
Any other community feedback from anyone? Well, I would say, oh, the Tri Public Library.
Joy, Joy, did you want to say something?
I did. Um, I, I think I figured out the mystery of the. Evaluation report, reporting, Marie. So I just, um, was looking back and doing some digging in the back. Um, and the compiled result just gave like partial, it gave both. Twenty two and then twenty three did not show up for that part, so I will. Make sure everything is showing on both. Does that make sense?
I didn't quite follow that, but I, that's okay.
I'll, yeah, I'll put it in the Dropbox and I'll send the link. And it was my bad when we printed the, um. The, when I ran the report, it only showed the twenty twenty two, but it had the both responses in the. It compiled it for twenty two and twenty three. When I printed it, it only showed up partial, so that's probably why you didn't see your reports. So I will print all eighty four pages.
Thank you, Joy.
Eighty four pages.
That's what it says. I just don't want to not include anything. I'm just going to print everything. If that's okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. And then I'll put it on the Dropbox and. For everybody.
Thank you so much for your sleuthing. Off the clock.
Thank you, Nancy, dear. Um, okay, so. Tri Public Library made the New York Library Association's, uh, news, you can use newsletter. It, it, yeah, it made the announcement or had the article about, um, Lansingburg reopening. So we have arrived. Or in Nyla. Um. And yes, I still get so many comments about. The programs we, we have here. A, a dad I know and his kids were here. And he just like, as he was running after him going, you guys have so many great things here. He just like, ah. It was very bubbly and enthusiastic about it.
That's so sweet.
I know. Um. Public comment? I know there's. Any public comment? One, twice, three times. Okay. Uh, date and time of next meeting, May fourteenth, twenty twenty four, five o'clock at the finance, five thirty for regular meeting. So. I will make, is there anything else? Last minute, last things? Nope. In that case, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks for being here.
Of course.
Please, our shutdown.
You shut them.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, Zoom.